Good morning, everybody. We will convene as the Board of Supervisors. I need approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Would you read the minutes of the last regular meeting, please?
October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, through the regular meeting, and the right kind of orders you were registered to order at nine hundred present of these spots practicing with. Motion by Cluse second by Bosch to approve the tenant ever done, which varies. Minutes of the previous regular meeting on October sixth, twenty twenty five for red, approved things for things. Motion by Cluse second by Ellis to receive accordingly revenue report from the Wright County. Change gears. Motion by Bosch second by Cluse to receive the quarterly revenue reports, sorry, county reports, motion gears. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to table the right kind of segregation of duties policies. For review by the department heads and county attorney, motion carries. Adam Fement, right from the engineer, given update on the secondary roads department. Motion by Cluse second by Ellis to during the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or attractions? If not, they stand approved as read. Claims have been around? Anyone from the public like to speak? Now is your time. Okay, we'll move on to Bradley W. Robinson Economic Development Board to present recommendation. For the Wright County Economic Development Commission to hire Aaron Budwig as economic development director.
Okay, thank you, sir. I've got a little handout here, yes, it's, I do, talks about, uh.
Yes.
Part of the decision process.
Thank you.
I guess we even hope that you would take action on the commission's unanimous, uh. Recommendation that Aaron be hired and, and, uh. The idea is, as it says there on the. Handout that even started the. Middle of November, hopefully, uh. Daryl Stephen will be back then, the idea again that there would be some. Overlap the time there before, uh, Daryl Stephen retires on, uh, December thirty first, that he gives opportunity to show him around the county. And that's what that proposal, uh, not proposal, but that's what that analysis looks at, at both being on staff. For forty-five days, the. Cost to the county, uh, so one there is, uh. Uh. We had another candidate that, uh. And we made an offer to, but, uh, our salary was too low, they declined, so. I guess I'd answer any questions or anything the commission might have.
Do you have a, an offer letter that lays out what the stipulations will be and start date?
Written offer?
Right.
Um, that's my knowledge, uh. Is Daryl, Daryl Stevens on, right?
He is.
Uh, did we, we have any written offers, Daryl Stevens? Oh, it's muted though, isn't it?
A, a letter, letter, a gauge of employment will be issued to the applicant once waterproofs.
Is there a contract?
No, there's not.
Has the background check been done?
Um, my understanding is the. Boy handbook says that any offer is subject to physical. As well as, uh, drug screening and background check, so. That has not been, uh, undertaken yet.
Oh, sorry, okay. I guess I'd like to see what the stipulations are of employment from your offer letter. Before I make a decision.
What stipulations?
Um. The salary, is there any additional benefits? Is there, is it gonna strictly follow the employee handbook?
As far as I know, it is.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing I know on is the, uh, same with the.
Mm-hmm.
Hypers, as we mentioned.
Correct.
Yeah. The salary, that's what was. Confirmed and agreed to, but nothing right.
Any other question?
When interviewing him, did he have a plan for Wright County? Is there? Like things he has in mind, or how does that work?
Well, it's kinda hard to have a plan if you're not hired. Right?
So.
Um. Uh. He interviewed very well, um. It's a unanimous recommendation of the selection committee, uh, the commission, and it was unanimous of the commission. To the Board of Supervisors to hire Aaron. I don't know what else you want.
Yeah, I don't think Aaron, if, if he didn't convey that if we need radical changes to the.
Yeah.
How the department's operating, anything, he was wanting to continue with the successes that we've already had. Bring. As much employment as we can to the county or tax base.
Harry, no other questions, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the hire of Aaron Budwig as the economic development director. Contingent upon, um. Help me out, uh.
Post-op or pre-employment?
Say again?
Post-op or pre-employment?
Post-op or pre-employment?
Physical, drug chain, background check.
Physical, screening, drug, and background check.
I would second that. Any more discussion?
Can we have it, per the offer, a copy of the offer letter on that?
Say that again?
Can we have a copy of the, the letter, the offered letter, something in writing from the economic development board?
Daryl Stevens, can we prepare that?
I can do that.
I'll make a motion to table until we. Get, yeah.
You have a motion on the floor already.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor already. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Died for lack of second. For lack of approval.
Yes, for nays.
Any nays?
Nay.
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 Okay, that died for lack of approval.
It's defeated, so.
I guess my questions are, um. You know, the department heads, um. You know, for next year, we have to have, um, we're gonna probably lower leverage rate by another twenty cents. Um, I guess my concern is, um. I'd like to have each department possibly lower, um, or find cuts of maybe ten thousand dollars. My concern is if we, um, start the, the new individual in November and, and that, uh, additional pay for the two people. Um, our, our savings aren't there. That's, that's my concern.
So you would rather have a gap in, you'd rather have a new person come in with no overlap, no pass down, no, uh. Hey, m- meet these people that we are currently working in. Um, I mean.
It's, it's.
Economic development. Works a lot on relationships that have been developed, and, um, that is part of the. Idea between. By having overlap between, uh, the two employees.
Let's say, once again, it's, it's, it's more the budget than I'm concerned about, um, with overlap.
And you have a savings of sixteen thousand, uh, dollars, but you're concerned with, uh, two-month overlap.
Yeah. And I know we've done this with other individuals too, it's just. I have concerns with that also because.
You had a motion you wanted to make?
Yeah, I'm gonna make that motion, um, motion to table until we see. The letter.
Do you think that we can have a letter before the end of this meeting? Daryl Stevens?
Uh, no, only because I'm working remotely.
Second. I thought if we could have a letter this act, you know, before we end the meeting with drainage and stuff, then. We could move forward, but.
Do you have a time when you wanna table it too? Or just table it, pretty much, uh, table it to next week or two weeks, or just?
However long it would take.
Or just one as table?
One week. One week, okay.
We have a motion on the floor to table it. For one week, and we have a second. Any more discussion?
So what, what do you want in there? What do you want in there? Be specific so that we. Don't come back and say. I, what about this, or what about that, um, you, what exactly do you?
Well, that's what we want you to do is be specific and what the offer letter is. The higher offer letter.
I, I guess.
Is. Make sure that you have this, the salary and. Um.
Benefits.
As, as to what he's going to get, um, so starting wage, yeah, yeah.
So, normal, normal offer letters include, um, their offer of a position, so it's naming the position. Salary that they're gonna start at, um, if there's any contingencies on that salary, so if there's, uh, six-month review, twelve-month review. Um, if their benefits are to follow the, uh, uh, Wright County handbook, just state that right off the bat. If there's any additional vacation, uh, any additional leave that has been negotiated upon, it needs to be in that offer letter, so that's, that's what I normally put in line.
So you usually send an offer letter before they approve it?
Yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, it passes. Okay, get your offer letter, or do you be back at the meeting next Monday? It'd be great.
I don't think we need the board back at the meeting, just the letter probably, if that's what this is contingent upon. Is that correct?
Yes.
So just if one of you can bring it, be great.
We'll get it here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Adam?
First item on the agenda is the, uh, consider final plans for Project FM, CO ninety-nine, parent one oh nine, dash, dash, fifty-five, dash, ninety-nine. Over to him, clear. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The project description, as you see there, is HMA paving with milling, um, we are going to be milling a two-inch mill and fill. Uh, this project's starting at C twenty-five at Madison, or on C twenty-five, starting at Madison, going east on the north side of the lake. Going by the, by the golf course, Clermont Country Club, and then going all the way to Highway sixty-nine, and then also including the west side of Lake Cornea. Okay, so on Orion there. And then it goes all the way out to Nelson Avenue where we paved a few years back. So what we're planning to do on that, so one hundred eighty-fifth street, kinda around that curve, okay, so. What we're planning to do on that portion of that east-west road is do a shoulder widening like we did on Nelson Avenue from the cemetery. To include, uh, share the, share the road signs, um, so for walkers, but we're only going to do that to where the, uh, trail starts. At the, uh, Lake Cornea. So it starts there and then goes north around the lake, so that's where we'll go, and then going through the houses, we'll just do a two-inch mill and fill, beat all of the existing. Um, entrances, so we're not raising anything on anybody like that, um, but then around the top, and then going back by sports.
Um.
Graphics.
Sports graphics, we're gonna come back in and go kinda towards that, uh, railroad there. Cause we've already done page, so when we meet page, we'll just go all the way to that railroad right there by, uh, Witter's House.
Yes.
I do have a plan for Sandy Beach, uh, that interior of, uh, the, where the houses are on Southwest Corner. Um, but that cannot be in this contract, cause it is not a FM route, those are all local routes, those will all be spent with local dollars.
Will they be doing?
We'll try to get it at the same time with the contractor that, that gets the project, I have an estimated cost that I will put into the budget as we go forward, and then.
And you're gonna do a grindout and layover in that area?
Yeah, probably, uh, more like a one-inch mill and fill.
Yeah.
Just cause it's, uh, not heavy traffic back there.
No.
And they're just housing, so, um, and then also in that curved area behind, north of, uh, Witter's Place. That goes back to the road, um, uh, by the country club, there's that little, just, I don't know, a thousand feet in there, so that'll be included in on that. Um, and then back on the east side, also back across the railroad tracks, going north, kinda where, uh, Walton's live, back in that, that area, where, uh, Dave Johnson just.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, included in on that local contract, kinda like what we did with CP four's intersection. Figured out who the contractor was, hopefully get a good benefit out of it. Um, so, this project, like I said, it starts at C, or at Madison, goes all the way to Highway sixty-nine, um. So letting in January of twenty twenty-six at the I V D O T. We have budgeted two point two five million. Um, gave you guys the engineer's estimate, that is a confidential document till, uh. Till let.
You need approval on this.
I do, yeah.
Make multiple to approve, or Adam just stated. I'm not going through all that.
I'll second. I'm gonna agree with that.
Yeah, just, just, it's just, just like Adam said, yeah. That's what he said the emotion was.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes?
Uh, next item is the update, secondary roads, um, our blades have been outblading when they can, we're also doing, uh, ditch cleans. So we're slated to get done, I think we have about anywhere from two to four miles of ditch clean currently, uh, on the work orders. Um, and as long as the weather holds out, we're gonna keep going on, so, um, we have, uh, down by Eagle Grove, two hundred ninetieth Street. Up in Norway Township, Lee and one twentieth, uh, that, that they've been doing work on right now, and then we also have Jackson and Keyakut that is a work order, but. Um, if you want specifics, let me know, I'll get you those locations, but the guys have been doing a great job, we had, uh, have had multiple people say it looks great, so, which is really good. Um, trucks are still working on their U two, U two gravel, they've been done, uh, with mowing the hard surface, so we've switched our guys to working on the gravel. Um, it'll take us down at the bottom of number six, we started last Friday, and it'll take about six days per blade operator to get their route done. So we have ten blades, so that's, you know, but we have two, two mowers, so about thirty days, so anywhere from five weeks to six weeks. Uh, hauling objectives were about sixty-six percent done on your two gravel, um, putting the limestone on top of it, we. Um, we're putting a, um, trying to get that done as soon as possible before any.
Is there a point that you should stop just because winters come in and we don't wanna like scrape it off into the?
Honestly, what, so what we've tried to do with our blade operators is, is that when we do get snow, we try to leave a little bit of snow on the surface.
Mm-hmm.
And have that get packed in, so that we pack that, that rock in, so we don't see color, we're gonna have to see color, so we're not throwing it.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we, we've. Seen other counties go all the way till December, haul it, so, I know, uh, I don't want to, it's, it's not, but we're still having farmers go on those routes. Pushing that rock in, we're getting moisture, so we can go on and blade it, so, I'll talk with the guys and see what they think, but I know, I understand your concern.
Yeah, I know, yes.
Yeah.
And they, and honestly, they haven't in the past have done much better job at not, you know.
Yeah, pushing it out.
Pushing it out and, and putting it out.
Yeah.
Into the ditches, I don't see it like I used to, so.
Yeah, so, that's my update. Any other questions?
Day on the bridge.
Uh, Belmont Bridge, they have moved to the north side, they're supposed to be, um, getting their copper dam in and getting their piling in, but they're working. That's the good thing.
So, and, and their, uh, date for, um, damages starts when?
I will have to get back to you on that.
I know, I give you hell on roads that you have trouble with.
But.
But? But is there something coming next, or?
I've also had compliments on that the roads have been really good this year, uh, drivers that run a lot of the gravel roads, the feed mill drivers and stuff. So I wanted to pass that along, cause I know I give you.
We, we see it both ways, don't we?
Yeah.
So, that's good, I will pass that along to Nate and us.
Yes.
And the foreman, so.
Anything else for Adam? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple things here. That I'd like to have some pictures with. Bullshit. Yes. Hey?
I don't know, yeah, it is. Is there a price?
You're like thirty years.
Thirty years?
Yeah.
This is paper.
Yeah.
Where's my, where's my autograph?
You're both in blue.
Huh?
You're both in blue.
Oh, you guys look so nice together.
There's the gift bag.
Here, you have this, I don't wanna.
Be a pet at home.
Right here.
That'll.
I hate them.
That was for your next one.
Okay, uh, that's.
That's got numbers on it.
Yeah.
This, uh, certificate of achievement. This certification is pretend to, presented to. Peggy L., Peggy L. Flutenauer. Was L for, Lea?
Leah.
Leah. In appreciation of twenty-five years of dedicated commitment to serving Wright County and its citizens.
What's that number?
This, your twenty-five years, excuse me.
What'd you say?
Said twenty-five.
Yeah.
I thought I said twenty-five.
I thought it was, it was longer, I remember.
Feels longer?
Congratulations, I appreciate everything you've done. I'll feel a little bit.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Start when you were at the world or something?
I started in ninety-five, actually, but then.
I'm nothing.
But she'll get there.
Hmm.
It's more than that.
This is, uh, certification of achievement. To Amanda Myers in appreciation of five years of dedication committed to serving the Wright County and its citizens.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Can you two stand closer, please?
And there's.
And you forgot to give that to me.
Oh, yeah.
And there's another, there's another one coming next week. Denise, but she's not here, so we'll wait till next week.
Wow. Certainly not over, I started in November. The day after birthday, so I didn't work for me.
Okay, meetings, or excuse me, old business. New business. Meetings, we met with, uh. Me and Lynn met with Adam down at, on the seismic testing. Which is very, very. Updated each of us, and it was very good, interest me, I think they're coming.
They're gonna come next week.
Yep, and they'll give you the same update, it was very interesting, uh, it's. Basically, yeah. Promising, and it solved a lot of my questions.
Yeah.
Anything else before the board?
Um, I went to the City of Galt's, um, city council meeting, yes, and, um, they were. They were discussing about what would it look like to unincorporate. Um, mainly because their tax revenues. And, and, and the biggest hurdle that they're trying to get over, their tax revenues is about twelve thousand, give or take, dollars a year. Um, then they are, um, their insurance for ICAP and IMWCA, not ICAP, IMWCA, their, for. Valability and, uh, work in his time, cause they don't have ICAP, is, um, a little over eight thousand dollars a year. So, that leaves four thousand dollars for the city to, to work on.
For a year.
For a year, yeah, um, which is not much, um, and they do the best that they can, um, so, uh. One of the things that we talked about was, um, they have city water, and so they would need to do a water board probably. Um, there's billing, they have. Um, I think currently ten houses there, there's gonna be a new house built in Galt. Um, but, so maybe eleven houses that use the city water, and so they would need to talk about who's gonna do the, the billing. And then, you know, how is that account set up, uh, will there need to be a, a special water district, I mean, is that, uh, like a water and sewer district, similar like Lake Cornea? Um.
And sewage stream, I'm playing.
No, they have, they have, um.
They have all their own separate.
All their own separate things.
Leach fields, yeah.
And they were on, each of them would just, and operate and maintain their own separate thing instead of the city.
Um.
Does the city help them with that now or not?
No.
They just do the waters?
Yeah, they only do the water, the water, um, they did, uh, at the meeting, hire a new person to do the testing of the. Of the water, cause you have, because it's city, it has to be checked.
Yeah.
And that, and, uh, fortunately, there's a person in town that works for Mort's, and so, uh, he has agreed to do that for them. Um. The question, and I, and I did talk to Adam a little bit about it, is maintenance to the streets in town, it's not like homes where there's just that one main. Street, there are some side streets going through there, um, they asked me if we would keep them paved, and I, I kinda smiled. And said, probably not likely, you know, uh, it kinda, it depends, you know, um.
I also said, uh, uh, we could look at minimizing the amount of routes in that town too, so. I'm not saying that that's popular to do, but vacating routes is a possibility, so.
Yeah.
Just to reduce our ability there.
And then, um.
Do we currently remove all our smell?
Yeah.
Oh, we already do that.
Nice as possible.
They, they do mowing, um, I think of your county, around your county shed in the park there.
Yeah.
So, um, it's kind of a swap. Yeah, and that is one of the things that, uh, that Vicki Waters mentioned is that. She wants the town kept loaded up, and so, I think she was gonna try to get ahold of Vicki, or Vicki, Peggy sometime, Vicki was gonna get ahold of you. And, cause right now she's doing a lot of the mowing around, uh, some of the houses that are owned by people that are out of state or out of town. And because she wants the town not to fall apart, um, she does the mowing, but is there a way to, uh, assess? On her, on the tax statement, um, so she was going to look to see what the process is on that. Um, and then, I, I talked to Amanda a little bit about, uh, the, what is the procedure to unincorporate? And then I still have to find out, okay, what is the tax rate, if they unincorporate, what is their tax rate, and what is that gonna look like, so.
I've talked with Amanda about that, a couple months ago too.
Yeah.
Yeah, now when it un incorporates, do you still have, uh. Normally, the city ordinances would cover essentially planning and zoning or building ordinances, now that comes over to the county too, I assume.
Yes. Yes.
But since they all have their, they have that one well, right?
Right.
They would have to do some kind of levy, maybe. Thing to be able to do that.
Um, they, they, um, right now, the water bills, they bill quarterly. And the water bill does take care of the small repairs and the, and the, um. Uh, s- satellite, things like that. And ta- and the testing. Um, so, uh, unless something big happens to the well. You know, but it'd be nice to have it in place. It might be zero that they have to assess to it, but it might be, you know.
It won't be zero forever though.
No, that's right. So it might be something that we're in the middle of it, just set up the district now.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, I am going to get ahold of Jay, um, with Gabrielson Agency and just ask more questions about insurance. And what, what would it take? And what would it be? And is there a cheaper avenue than eight thousand dollars a year?
I think I did look at that last year too, and I was there when their insurance person was there, and he said you guys have the minimum. You have the minimalist coverage and there's nothing else we can do to lower it besides like taking coverage off of buildings and stuff.
Cause they, yeah, cause they went from a one thousand dollar deductible to twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. Um, they were wondering if the park, cause they have a marital ruin and a slide in their park, and they were wondering if we take that down, will that change? Because of the park, um. And then they have the, where the old post office was for, for properties that the city owns. And then the, the watershed where the well is at, and then the, um, which was the old.
Fire station.
Fire station, yeah.
So then what becomes of the city properties? Do those become county properties when you unincorporate?
They would, they talked about selling them. And then maybe putting that towards the, uh, water account. Which would carry them for a while on their water. You know, have a, a, a balance then in their water. So.
And if they can lower their insurance costs, would they un, unincorporate? Or they are pressing to unincorporate?
No, they would, they would prefer not to. They would, they honestly prefer not to, um, but. The, the revenues that they get from taxes, it does not, it, it's hard to keep a, a budget going when you have no money. So, and since the insurance is what takes the most. So.
And they don't wanna raise their levy rates.
I think they're, they're.
Mm-hmm. So anyway, um, I'll keep you guys abreast of what I find out, you know, what we can do. And I, I told them that I would, I'd get back to them or go back to their, try to get back to them before their next meeting, but definitely will be there at their next meeting.
I think there's a section in Iowa code about unincorporating.
Well, keep us abreast of what you're finding out.
I mean, I, I appreciate what they, for, for a small town in a small community that they do have it looking decent. I mean, it looks way better now than it did fifteen years ago, so.
I have a IDDA's board meeting on, on Wednesday. Amanda, will Courtney be able to come to that?
We'll have to go, I'll have to look. Cause we got elections going on and see who's gone and.
Anything else before the board?
We did have a safety committee meeting last week. We were gonna have a conversation about a few topics with you. Um, but in my research, uh, those topics need to be, um, done under a closed session, so I've asked the county attorney. Uh, which closed session, uh. Item been going through him, and he got back to me that they will be needed to be under a closed session, so I'll give that one to, uh. Amanda for next week's weekend habit, cause they're sensitive subjects that pertain to safety.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, one other thing, uh, if you haven't completed your physical or your. Uh, physical, wellness assessment, um, those are. Due October thirty-first.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that. All in favor? All eyes, we'll do a five-minute recess and then we'll be into our, uh. Drainage. Okay, we're, uh. Will convey the drainage trustees.
We'll make a motion to approve the tentative agenda.
All in favor? Uh, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Last meeting was October thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts. With the following members present, Rasmussen, Cluse, Luke, Bosch, and Ellis. Also present were Courtney Morris, Strange Administrator, and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties were Robert Watts, Kevin Rasmussen called a meeting to order at nine twenty AM. Motion to Ellis and second by Luke to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minnesota, the previous meeting on October sixth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. There were no drainage claims for payment needing approval. There were three work orders that were reviewed and approved. First one for DD one thirty-one, section twenty-seven of Dayton Township for a blowout on an eighteen-inch tile. Second one was DD thirty-six lateral B in section twenty-one of Lake Township for a remove of Beaver Dam. And the third one was DD one forty-nine and section nineteen of Wall Lake. Burr blowout roughly a hundred yards west of the west edge of the lane. Morse presented the following eight drainage invoices. They were all for brush and weed control. First one for DD forty-six dash ninety-two for one thousand three hundred dollars. Second one for DD forty-nine dash ninety for nine hundred dollars. Next one for DD one forty-five dash sixty-one dash one for seven hundred dollars. Then DD two twenty-eight dash eighty-five for one thousand dollars. DD twenty-five for two hundred and fifty dollars, DD one eighty-three for two hundred and fifty dollars, DD sixteen for one thousand two hundred dollars. And DD one eighty-seven for nine hundred dollars. Motion by Bosch and seconded by Cluse to approve, to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections?
Uh, on the, uh, DD thirty-six lateral B, the remove beaver dam, will you make that? There's multiple dams there.
Okay.
I just wanna pick the pictures up. Just add a S to dams.
When you get that rewritten, do you wanna let me know accordingly, I'll come signing it? Wayne?
Um, we had forty claims, five of them were, that presented from last week. The other thirty-five are the transfers for, um, admin fund from the drainage assessments that were done. So the total amount for all the claims this week is two thousand, or twenty-four thousand seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
Hold on a second.
All in favor? Uh, anyone from the public like to? Do or say something regarding the drainage districts? Any work orders?
We have five work orders. The first one is for Betty for DD one seventy-four dash two fifteen and section thirty-one of Wall Lake. Um, this was reported. Dean actually came in and reported this one. Um, they wanted Mazda construction on it, and it is a six-foot diameter blowout. The next one is for Lynn Luke's, uh, this was reported by Kevin Hadley. They requested mountain movers on it for two blowouts on a twenty-two inch tile and DD one eighty-four. Um, this is section thirty of Iowa. The next one is for Dean, uh, DD seventy and section seven of Lake Township. This was reported by Matt Oddland. Uh, he would like Aaron's brothers on this, and it was reported as a blowout on a twelve to fourteen inch tile. It's about right where it transitions from a twelve to a fourteen, so he's not quite sure which portion is on. Uh, the next one is for Dean, it is in drainage district two hundred, uh, section nine of Dayton Township. This was also reported by Matt Oddland, and it was reported as a blowout, uh, crushed tile and it separated. Um, a twenty-inch tile, and he would like Aaron's brothers on that. And the last one is for Betty as well. This is for DD ninety-six, section twenty of Vernon Township, was reported by Neil Thomas. He would like Henninger on it, and it was reported as a possible plugged intake or pile of a ten inch. Um, it's just retaining water right there and it's not draining. So he said it's plugged in that area.
And did he specify whether it was in his field or whether it was in the ditch?
Field.
It is in the field, okay.
Outside of the road right away.
Okay.
Now it's still.
Would like it to be confirmed.
Yeah.
Check that one.
Yeah, I, cause I know where that's at, and I've been there, cause that was when the, the. They were dumping water, uh, from the big plant, uh, and it was coming down and it was going to there.
Okay.
So, um. And then it was just pretty much, I think it filled that, and then it was going over the, through the ditch, and then was getting it too wet for them to work. But anyway, I will, I'll go back out and look at it, but.
I'm still trying to get with Ryan on that sloughing where they brought the combine in.
Okay.
I just haven't been able to get in contact with him yet. But I've been trying, but I will try to get it done this week.
Okay.
So we get a work order, put up, put together on it.
We did have another individual come in to report that, and I let him know that it was already reported and in the progress of, or process of getting.
I wanna go out and take pictures and see why it's. See why it's sloughed, for one. See what went on.
Well, I believe, uh, via the pictures that I saw from his dad that came in. Um, I don't believe that that tile runs parallel to the ditch. I believe it actually runs into the ditch and outlets. And the, it washed out around it, from what I can kind of see by the pictures.
Uh, pictures I saw, the tile was running right up on top. But I didn't see anywhere, but it could have been down further, I don't know. My pictures I saw, I didn't see anything going into the.
Right.
Ditch, but I'll, that's why I wanna get with them.
Yep.
Go out and check it out.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, uh. Any invoices?
Yes, we have six of them. The first one is for, uh, Soil and Septic LLC. This was worked on in DD two fifteen on the main. In section five of Pleasant Township, reporters, uh, reported by Chris Viness as a sixteen-inch type blowout. He submitted his invoice for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, he states that he found a ten-inch broken tile, not a sixteen, and repaired it. That it was off grade, so they put bags of concrete under it to raise grade. Um, they did have a second invoice that came in that is included on his invoice. Um, they had builder brought in by mountain movers for the four hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, but he did include that on his invoice. That was that one, and then the remaining are all brush and weed control. First one is DD fifty-five for one thousand nine hundred dollars, which is his estimate. Next one's for DD two thirty for one thousand two hundred dollars, which is his ex-estimate. Then DD two thirteen for one thousand three hundred dollars, which was his estimate. DD four lateral three for one thousand one hundred dollars, which was his estimate. And DD ninety for seven hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was one thousand one hundred dollars. And he has about six, five or six more that are left.
We need approval for these?
No.
God, get that wrong every damn time.
It would say approve on your thing, it says review.
Well.
It just says review.
No, review and sign.
Fine, I signed them all.
Okay.
Thank you, we're good to go. You'll get it eventually. You have about two months left.
Less than two months.
That's awesome. Open and review drainage district sixty-two quote request, quote request for open ditch repairs.
Alright, so, we had seven contractors reach out and request the packet. We have received back two quotes. Um, I will also say that the packet that went out included all the pictures. It included a map of where the ditch is, and then, uh, like tabulation sheet that I put together. To the best of my ability, trying to include everything that was possible. Um, I did send out letters to the landowner where that crossing is. And I have heard back from him. It is all on Alan Wilhite's property. He did tell me that he was unaware that that bridge was even there. Um, he has no problem with it being removed. I did send him out an agreement for him to sign. Um, so we have something in writing that he is okay with us removing it and not gonna hold the county or the district or anybody. Responsible for damage, um, such and such, and I do have a copy of that letter if you guys would like to see that at all. Um, but the two quotes that we have received, first one is from Henninger Construction, and the second one is from, uh, Peterson Excavating. We did have a lot of questions because it, there was not really any specifics that we had that we could provide to any of them. Um, so they did the best to their ability. And Henninger Construction. Their quote is hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
One twenty-six five hundred?
Yes.
And what was the next one, Peterson, you said?
Yes. If you recall, the estimate from the engineer was eighty thousand to a hundred thousand. Um, Peterson Excavating. He did provide two prices or two quotes, one for if there was just dirt and seeding. And then one if riprap had to be brought in and needed, so it'd be one or the other. Um, his quote for just the dirt and seeding would be seventy-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Or if riprap is needed, instead of the first one, it would be eighty-two thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars.
And Peterson said it, like, humph, uh, Burt?
Humble.
Humble.
What was that last one?
Eighty-two thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars.
Yes. Um, Henninger's did not provide an estimated start date or completion date. Uh, Peterson did an estimated start date of four, one of twenty twenty-six. Uh, he said possibly late twenty twenty-five, weather permitting, with an estimated completion date of six thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Two months. I would make a motion to, or the contract to Peterson Construction.
Excavating.
Peterson Excavating.
There's a motion on the board, do we have a second?
A second.
Do any roll call on this one?
No.
All in favor? All eyes?
And they'll determine whether they need riprap when they get in there, I'm sure, right?
Yes. He did make the comment that, um.
I think.
With everything that kinda needed to be done, his recommendation was kind of a whole ditch clean out, but he doesn't know that that was already discussed. Right, and that that is not the option that we were wanting to go with, so it did inform him of that before he turned this in, yeah. You know, last week. So.
With the data, the last time it was cleaned out and the engineer, I'm not recommending it be a cleaned out.
Yeah, just because of, if he were to clean it out, then he'd have the dirt right there, or those other locations, and not have to haul it in.
Very, yeah, thanks.
So, uh, my only recommendation was, if I remember right, at the stop end of that where it belts into Eagle Creek. I don't think there's filter strips along that portion.
So, where the brush is, is down at that.
Right. Look, it was gonna start somewhere this fall, that would be ideal because. Look, it was gonna start somewhere this fall, that would be ideal because. Um, otherwise he's gonna be, will have crop damages too. April, did you, just a recommendation, Brandon?
To start at the outlet where the brush is and work up. Uh, I know one of the questions, I don't recall if it was from, uh, Peterson or not. Um, if he was allowed to, when they go in and remove that brush, if they had to clear it from there, if they could bury it, or if they could burn it there.
I think work with the landowner on that, if they could.
Definitely work with the landowner, because our, our right-of-way easement doesn't.
Go with that.
Doesn't cover burning, or if the fire was to get away.
Yeah.
I will pass that along.
Yeah.
Just so that they know as well.
Yeah.
Are they aware to, if they find additional things there, to let us know before.
Change orders.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that takes care of number eight. Anything else before the board on drainage?
Motion to adjourn drainage.
I'll second.
All in favor? All ayes, thank you.